At 6 o'clock, I'm calling the Board of Trustees meeting at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 19th at 2021 to order. Welcome to all that are viewing this through the Zoom. This meeting is going to be a very special meeting because we, as a Board of Trustees, will be voting to add the seventh member to our board. As you've probably noticed, our clerk again is not here, Kathleen McQueen. But in her place is Brenda, and there she is, Chandler, and she'll be taking official notes. And later, a short recess is going to be taken because once that trustee has been officially voted on, she'll be doing the swearing in of this new legislator or a trustee for the Bath Township. Where's, oh, there's Steve. At this time, our communications coordinator, Taylor Reeves, there you are, Taylor up in the corner, will explain the meeting process as it relates to the Zoom. Anyone who wishes to speak during the public statement section of this meeting must access this process. Taylor, you want to explain it to us?
Yes, so when we get to a public statement, I will repeat all of this again. But if you would like to speak at that point, you can raise your hand physically. If you have your video turned on, you can use the raise hand function via Zoom. If you're dialing in, you can dial *9 to raise your hand. And then I will give you access to unmute yourself. If you are dialing in, you will dial *6 to do so. And then the same will go for when we get to the trustee applicants as well.
Thank you, Taylor. Greatly appreciated. Our item three, which goes our civil reflections with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, will be presented by Treasurer Steve Wisswasser.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Now we have the approval, number four of the agenda. If there are any questions or changes to the agenda at this time, I have one, but is there anyone else? Okay. My question for the agenda, and Karen, I ran out of time, so help me out on this one. It was mentioned earlier about the planning commissions, December 29th, and maybe Nick, you can answer this, which has to do with the SUP. We have that down as, hang on here, I know because I saw it. We have it down as to having to have a discussion on it. And I didn't quite understand that with all the other items that were there for rezoning and for other things that were done for items for action. So help me out. Am I looking at this in a wrong concept?
No, what they're asking for tonight, it obviously will just be an introduction and discussion led by Planner Nick Kapelski because they are asking for a special use permit.
Okay.
They might plan as well as a license for medical marijuana purposes.
Okay, and that, we didn't do that before. It didn't go through the planning commission. It hasn't come before the board. This is the first time?
I believe there have been some presentations to the planning commission. Um, thank you, Taylor. Nick, can you go ahead, please?
Yes, this has gone through the planning commission. The planning commission for special use permits only provides a recommendation. It's up to the board to have the final decision as to whether or not to approve it.
Right, so the agenda has it under new business, so this is new business?
This, that's correct. This has not been on the agenda before.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I needed. Appreciate it. So are there any changes to the agenda? Apparently not. So there's no vote on the agenda?
No, you got to vote.
Okay, go ahead. Record roll call vote?
Just a vote, do a subverbal.
No, a record roll call, thank you. I appreciate that, Al, but I prefer the record roll call.
Mr. Fuele and Bliss?
I'm assuming then the motion is to approve the agenda?
That's what, that's what the motion, yes.
Nobody made a motion.
Oh, I can't make, I can't make a motion. You have to.
Well, I think that'd be too big a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented.
A second.
And now Brenda, although, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yeah.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. Okay, that's the five votes for tonight. So do we have a disclosure of conflict of interest? Apparently not. So we go into public statement. So again, Taylor, you're gonna have to do a second round for this?
Anyone that would like to make a public statement at this time can raise their hand physically if they have their video on or use the raise hand function or dial *9 to raise their hand. Laura, you can go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Laura Genovich. I haven't met most of you. I'm an attorney at Foster Swift, and I represent a company called The Botanical Company, which is a prospective adult-use marijuana business that's interested in applying for permission to operate in the township in the future. I sent a letter back in December kind of introducing our client, so hopefully you all received that. And I just wanted to take briefly, less than three minutes, a quick chance to to talk about a couple of things. I had the pleasure of speaking to the planning commission at the public hearing in November and sharing some of these thoughts, and they were very receptive, and I really appreciated that. The current, and this relates to the proposed adult-use marijuana, recreational marijuana ordinance that has not yet come to the township board, but will probably be making its way to you at some point in the near future. The current proposed ordinance that the planning commission was looking at for the entire township, we kind of put this in our letter and talked about it, the planning commission. But we have a bit of a concern about that kind of not attracting as many quality businesses as you might want to get in the township and not being as competitive in the manner that the statute would anticipate. There's certainly some benefits to having more than one retailer license available, including increased revenue to the township in the form of annual fees, property tax revenue, state revenue sharing, and things like that. But I think another issue with that as well is that, as it's currently drafted, the proposed ordinance would give a strong preference, quote, to businesses that already have a medical marijuana facility in the township. And since you only have one license for medical, and it was granted on essentially a first-come, first-served basis, that sort of, again, takes away from the competitive process that the law requires for the adult-use ordinance. So I don't want to go into a long legal lecture, but I just wanted to raise and kind of echo the points that we made at the planning commission and in our letter to the board, which is that we really think it makes sense, and hopefully the township will consider allowing two retailers in the township and eliminating the language for that preference for the existing business. When it does come up from the planning commission, of course, there's a recommendation from the planning commission, but ultimately, this board does not have to accept the way it comes up from the planning commission. So if the planning commission sent up an ordinance with only one retailer, this board could, of course, decide to do something different. So we'd love the chance to speak again at a meeting where that's being considered. I understand it's not before you tonight. But I really just wanted a chance to introduce myself and express our clients' interest in doing business in the township. And if there's any questions that we can answer in terms of the business or our thoughts on the ordinance, we'd be happy to do that and address anything that the board would like assistance with.
Right. Thank you very much. Taylor, do you have, it looks like Nick's hands up.
Thank you, Taylor. I just wanted to sort of reply to what Ms. Genovich had just said. She did speak at public comment when we had the public hearing for the ordinance. You know, those comments were passed along to our township legal counsel. And, you know, our township legal counsel respectfully disagreed with the points that it creates an unfair advantage. So I, my understanding is we had had a conversation about possibly having a phone call between Ms. Genovich and our legal counsel, as well as myself and Superintendent Hildebrandt. But I have not heard anything further on that. I think there was a conflict in scheduling. But, you know, to this point, you know, township legal counsel has said that they, they don't personally see an issue with it and, you know, take the advice of legal counsel.
If anyone else would like to make a public statement at this time, you can raise your hand. Ryan, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Ryan Bay, so I live right around the corner, like Lansing and Meridian Township. But I've been in the cannabis industry a long time. I have a brand called Redemption and a 501(c)(3) called Redemption Foundation. And I'm just saying, yeah, I shop down at Monachallos and Myers and Big S. And that's, that's where I go, that corner. I'm excited that you guys are considering opting in for the rec. And I would just say that from a, from a consumer standpoint, I'd love to see the opportunity to have a few, few businesses get an opportunity to go in there, just like you can go to Myers or Monachallos or vice versa. Give a little variety and bring more, more business to the area. But I'm excited, and thanks.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to make a public statement at this time, they can raise their hand physically, use the raise hand function, or dial *9. Bad, you can go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I know you guys have a really busy agenda, and I just want to say thank you with everything you have going on for taking the time to consider the special use permit for Sunrise Mountain, Sunrise Forest, excuse me. We've been in, at 60 meetings. I think this is the big round number of 60 meetings so far over the last two years and really had the benefit of understanding how your priorities have developed over these years as a community. And I just want to thank you for all the time that you've been at these meetings as well, and the community has engaged, and we've just seen unanimous support for what's been proposed so far. So thank you for the time and all the hard work that's gone into this. Looking forward to that discussion today. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to make a public statement, Todd, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name's Todd Costa. I'm a landowner in Bath Township. I own property at 16850 Chadwell Road. And I'm also a commercial real estate broker, and I work with clients in Bath Township. And I would just like to see a competitive process, you know, for the marijuana, where multiple people have a chance to compete. And I've also focused on retail my whole, my whole career for 17 years in the real estate business. And I think we're going to be seeing a lot of fallout on retail businesses, shopping centers and things like that. And I think the opportunity to have a viable business in Bath Township moving forward really opens up to multiple businesses being able to succeed there and pay property taxes for, for years down the road instead of having empty buildings that we might be seeing in the future. So thank you for your time, everybody.
Are there any other public statements at this time? I do not see anything additional.
All right, thank you. Thanks to all for your comments. Item seven, we're looking at the county, state, federal, and other agencies. Is there anyone here?
If there is anyone here for that agenda item, they can raise their hand.
I.
I do not see anyone.
Okay, I'm gonna kind of throw in a curveball to you, Karen. Because there isn't anyone here from the county or the state, could you give us a COVID update? I am sorry for that, but again, I ran out of time. You ran out of time, so.
No, that's fine.
Because no one's here.
Yep, thank you for the opportunity. So I participate weekly in calls with the Clinton County Emergency Operations Center. And right now, the biggest concern is getting people vaccinated. Most of the people in Group 1A, which is first responders, have been vaccinated, including our police and fire. The bottleneck at this time is a large amount of vaccines have been requested, and the orders are not being fulfilled. Right now, we've had about 1,600 shots, I believe, in Clinton County. Moving on to Group 1B, to put this in perspective for all of you, there are about 50,000 people in Group 1B that need to be vaccinated in the next coming three to four months. So it is going to be an astronomical undertaking. But the Clinton County Health Department, part of the, excuse me, Mid-Michigan District Health Department are up for the challenge, and they are working with partners like Rite Aid, Kroger, and Meyer to try to line up shot clinics for people to be able to sign up for. And their, their philosophy is really, anywhere you would normally go, you should be able to get a shot, whether you go to your doctor, whether you go to the pharmacy, that you should be able to have access to a shot. So that is how they are modeling this program. Hopefully, we are able to obtain the shots needed to vaccinate the people in Group 1B, which includes additional first responders. I believe it takes care of daycare workers, teachers, people over 65 with health conditions. I don't have the list in front of me, so I can't name them all, but approximately 50,000 people. So right now, the challenge really is getting shots so that they can be distributed. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Madam Chair, it looks like we have County Commissioner.
Okay.
Stacy on the phone. So go ahead and unmute, Mr. Stacy.
Is that the little phone up in the?
Yeah, Commissioner Stacy, can you hear us? Says he's unmuted. Go ahead and unmute again, Commissioner Stacy.
Hello, I'm here.
There.
Hi.
Oh. *6, *9, I'm here wherever star you need me to be on. No, I think Karen said it best, the problem is the availability of the vaccine. You know, there's, you know, this, this area, the three-county area, is pretty skewed, you know, to an older demographic. So we have quite a few people that fit into those Phase 1A and Phase 1B. And the more we expand, the more hard it is to get the, you know, people to the front of the line as quickly as we can. The, our Mid-Michigan Health Department Director released a good, short, two- or three-minute video that if you haven't seen before, I'll go ahead and pass it out to your email accounts. It's very, very accurate about describing what the situation is. Hopefully, this will start clearing up, though, because the, we only have two vaccines that are available right now, the Pfizer and the Moderna. But the AstraZeneca and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine should be getting FDA approval next month in February, so that'll double the amount of vaccine that's available. But, you know, I, I think Karen said it best, that if you're looking to your health department to get the vaccine, you're probably gonna be waiting a while because I don't think they're gonna have a priority on the shipment. I think you're right, that, you know, your Meyer, your other Walgreens, your Rite Aid, your pharmaceuticals, I think if, if you're in that category and want to get signed up, especially if you're an older person, just sign up as many different ways as possible and grab the first place in line that you can get.
If I may, that video is on our website from Marcus Cheetum.
So that's all I got, ma'am supervisor.
No, no, that's fine. Did you hear what, did you hear what our superintendent said? Okay.
Yes, I did.
Okay, super. Thank you. Is that it, Taylor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, we go on to item eight, which is the consent agenda. Is there any questions with the consent agenda? If not, we'll take a record roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Fuele and Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we've got that. Now, we have, that takes care of that, so it's approval of the minutes, which is nine on our agenda. Are there any changes to the minutes? All right, I have a hand going up, I think. Mr. Treasurer, is that you?
Yes, Mrs. Supervisor, we didn't call, do a motion on the vouchers. I believe we ought to do that this evening.
Nope, that's fine. It's in the consent agenda, so you want a second?
As a treasurer, I would like a motion from somebody to approve the vouchers a second, and I'll vote for it as well.
And will we approve the vouchers?
I'll second that.
All right, we have, for the vouchers, apparently there needs to be a vote, or our treasurer is asking for one, so we will do a record roll call vote for the vouchers.
Mr. Fuele and Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. All right. So if I'm understanding, this is the second time we've done this, just make sure I understand, our consent agenda, we, we do record, we do a vote for our minutes, and then we do a vote for the approval. So our consent agenda is not all together, is that correct? I want to make sure I'm understanding that.
For the vouchers?
Yeah.
She didn't say that. I, myself personally, as a treasurer, I think you have a responsibility to do that.
I understand that.
Consent agenda can be anything that the board so chooses it to be. With this board, this particular board and this leadership, I think there ought to be a consent agenda vote. There should be a separate vote on the vouchers, and it should be a roll call vote. That's my opinion as a treasurer.
Nope, I understand, which means we take it out of the consent agenda, correct or not?
If the board so chooses to move forward this, in this fashion, yes.
Okay, board.
Do we need a motion for this?
I don't know. I'm asking a question.
I, I would move from this point forward.
Okay.
Make a motion to take and remove the vouchers from the consent agenda and have a roll call vote on each meeting for these vouchers.
A second, Tab.
Okay, super. All right, do we need, let's have a record roll call vote? Oh, go ahead, Ryan. I see a hand.
Is the, is the, the flow of the agenda in the board rules? Do we need to amend the board rules?
No.
Karen, is it, yes?
Where, where is it in the board rules?
There's an order for the agenda in the board rule. For regular meetings, special meetings, and workshops.
All right, that's, I don't see it, but that doesn't mean it isn't there. So I guess what that means then, if you have to change the rules for your policy, which was adopted in 2013, that also needs a vote. So if, if the policy needs to be changed, I need to have someone make that motion?
Can I speak to the supervisor?
No, by all means.
I would be willing to make a friendly amendment to my motion to include a change in the board rules, and so we can do this. If so, if that would be approved by the, whoever seconded it.
No, Joe seconded, like trustee bits.
Yes.
All right, so if I'm understanding, we're gonna have a friendly amendment to a request. Is that understood? Dealing with the policy changes in our rules, which again, were adopted and accepted in 2013. So I need a record roll call vote for that. Is that understood? Brian, do you have any questions? Okay, no, I can, I can see your head moving, so I'm assuming that everybody understands what the motion is on the floor. Okay.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Wisswasser?
Yeah.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Fuele and Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
And again, we'll assume it's there. All right, so we have the approval, number nine of the minutes. Is there a motion on the floor for the minutes to be adopted?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
So there are no changes? So the motion to accept the minutes is written? Take a vote?
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yeah.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Fuele and Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
All right, move to item 10. Apparently, this is an audit. Is this for you, Treasurer Wisswasser?
It's not an audit, ma'am supervisor.
No, I understand that.
Good evening, board members. As you, some of you know who was on the board back in the last term of office. We did receive a letter late November from, or a phone call late November from our auditing firm, CHBW, from Adrian. They had a six-year stat with us. They will not be fulfilling their, their sixth year. They were here for five years. For those of you who are not familiar with this, they have proceeded. They had a auditor take and retire, Donna Heck, which is the eighth part of the CHBW. And she decided to retire for unknown reasons in December 31st of this year. And so what Jason Wade, who's been our correspondent, our main guy, he's the only government auditor left they have in their firm. They've chosen to no longer participate in government audits and only do institutional audits, and so they're foregoing their last year of their contract. We, we have taken and talked about this, and obviously, the board members have gotten paperwork. I believe there's 19 different audit firms that we put out an RFQ for, for requests for, for services. And we've, I've heard from several of these people, and as Karen has as well, they are returning their information to us. I believe the deadline is this Friday. And we'll have to pick for a new auditor, start, start fresh for our 2020 audit. This is of the utmost importance. We need to get this locked up and get it done because we're already into the 2020 audit season. However, we typically don't get our, our financial papers done until late April and into May. This last year with COVID, we was all the way in June, we had to have an extension. There may be some more of that with the COVID thing this year. We're not gonna know until we get to that point. Any questions, I'm here to, to answer them. They did provide us with a letter, as they have to, of why they, they chose not to re-up. They will also provide a letter by law to each one of the firms that bid on this, if they so choose. Our audits are under michigan.gov, Department of Treasury. You can take and do them and look at them. We've had clean audits for three years in a row, from '16 through, through this year, up till this year, so it's not a, it's not a case of a problem or a defect or any kind of things that's went on here in the past. Going forward, it'll be up to the new auditors. Going forward, it'll be up to the new auditors to, to audit us and see what they think about it. Any questions? I guess I'm available.
So is that being put in a motion? Because we have to accept or reject their letter?
No, there's no, there's no motion, no, no, accepting or rejecting their letter.
Just information.
Required by them to take it in writing. Uh, they didn't have to. I requested it either or. I, I wanted it in writing. Uh, and as because of the simple fact, they had to send the same letter, um, to the competing firms um, that are going to apply for this. And I wanted to see what letter it goes there.
Okay, that's appreciated. So we'll just wait to hear from you then with regards to a new auditor. Or we vote, obviously you'll give us a list.
The board will receive a list and we'll narrow it down and we'll, we'll, we'll pick one depending on, on the, the type of audit and then there'll be, they bid on this. It could be as much, it could be a financial thing is involved. Um, it could be a lot of different things that could be involved. They, they, they have to give us a proposal. That's what the request for proposal is of what their scope of their services are. And you have to keep in mind, we do have Maynard and Custerson as an accounting firm, which is not common for bigger township of, of our size. Um, and that takes and plays into this as well.
Yes, trustee Liz.
Mr. Treasurer, I'm sorry if I missed this, but when I was on the board last time, this is when we hired this firm. We did large public interviews of multiple firms. Is that your intention again or a smaller process? Or how do you think that'll go?
Well, to be totally honest with you, Ryan, I can't tell you what the process is going to be until we get the proposal, request for proposals in. Cause I don't know whether we're going to have how many large groups we're going to have done to the interview. But to be honest with you, that's an honest, honest answer. Um, I would assume that we would take and we would, we would question these people and look at them and also look at their references and look where they're from and see what, what's uh, going on with them. Cause we're, we're only interested in the best here. We're not, in my opinion, I'm not interested in the cheapest. I want the best.
Well, if you're looking for any support in looking over the proposals at the, at the beginning, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
I would assume most board members would be there with Ryan. What do you think? Trustee Joe Benzy, trustee Rosenkranz, uh, is, is that an issue for you? In other words, if he needs some help? Whittling, I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about whittling it down. Is that what you're talking about, Ryan? Is helping the treasurer look at?
Uh, sure. Did providing feedback to him's processed it through a couple of times. So I don't mean to insur myself where he doesn't need me, but happy to provide an extra pair of eyes.
To review the applications?
Yes.
Okay.
Proposals.
Okay.
Keep, keep in mind, Marie, you need to keep this to the utmost, um.
Well, that's.
Urgency. You can't drag this thing out for months and months and months. You have a very short window of, of opportunity. The reason why it's falling the way it is is simply because it was, it came during an election year. Um, and, and so that was part of the issue. Um, we need to take and move forward on this because we will be, um, penalized by the Department of Treasury. If you go later than June 1st on your, on your financial statement. Well, you don't have a lot of wiggle room here. You, you have to take and make good decisions and, and do a good thing because that's, you, you are regulated by the Department of Treasury and how long you have to do this. So that's, that's the big thing. And the other thing to keep in mind is that you've had four perfect opinions in the role or, excuse me, three perfect opinions in the role. I'm, I'm going to give you the fourth one here before long. Uh, but that, that's the other thing you need to keep, keep in mind and these other firms are going to look at that. There, that doesn't happen a lot. And I'm not saying it's one reason or another. I'm just telling you that that is a, is a big, a big call for these people. Cause they like to pick up audits like that. And Ryan, you've been on boards before. You've been involved in, um, how these things work. So you, you're familiar with what I'm talking about, I'm sure.
Yes.
Well, is any, is it something we all need to be educated on or is this something you're going to deal with?
We're gonna, we're gonna share it with you. We don't do, we don't do anything here. We don't share with everybody.
No, I'm, I'm just asking.
We're gonna share it with you and we're gonna try and get the best possible solution we can get. Um, we would have had to do this again by next year because we would have been timed out with the folks that was there. Um, as Ryan said, they, these people have been around for five years. Um, and so we would have had to do this anyhow. So it really is, is something going forward. It's a healthy thing to do.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not, it's not a bad thing. And frankly, honestly, I, I look forward to the challenge.
I think that makes all the sense in the world. I just wasn't sure when you were talking when, when, if in fact there was something more that anybody needed to do.
No, we all need to look at it and it'll be brought back to the board. It's not a one man show here.
No, I, I get that. Your one man show needs to be, you know, for everybody, but I just wasn't sure exactly what your process was.
First thing we gotta do is we gotta get to Friday. Then, then we gotta get, we gotta get the, uh, the candidates to reply. Some of them may, some of them may not. Um, just, it's going to be dollars and cents. It's going to be whether they can make money doing this audit.
Okay.
Our audit is different from a lot of them are. The smaller townships are, are a lot more, um, user intense where ours is not. Because we have a, we have, we choose to have a CPA firm who does our financial statements. And Maynard and Custerson being Maynard and Custerson and they take and, and do a lot of the legwork upfront. You basically, when you get done, you get audited twice here. And, and, and that's why by the time you're ready for the auditors, by the time you've gotten done with the first group, you're, you're pretty familiar with where everything is.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. That was a perfect update, to say the least. All right, still under item 10. This is the part that everybody's been waiting for. I can see you guys are, you know, on the edge of your seats, so to speak. These are applications for our trustee, for our vacancy of our Board of Trustees. The only process at this point that we have is three to five minutes that each of you will have a chance to speak to the board on what you would like them to know about you and why you want to be a trustee. That's, and I'm sure that, you know, again, your three to five minutes, which for me has always been known as an elevator speech. Um, and we're going to go in alphabetical order. That's what you get, Jason, for being, you know, it's starting with an A. So make sure that I'm not going to sabotage your name. It's going to be Mr. Jason Amagiaki. No, try me again. Say it out loud for me.
I'm muted. Oh, here we go. I, can you hear me? Uh, it's, it's Almarigi.
Oh, A L, Al, so the A is, okay, Almarigi, got it. Then you'll have Guy Eisenheimer, which will be second. Then you have Judy Gardi, and then you'll have Kendra Howard. Is Kendra? Is she on or is, I don't see a picture.
She would, yeah.
Okay. And then last but not least of anyone would be Lisa Mead. And I see. Where'd I see? I saw, okay, I see Lisa's name. I don't see a picture. So Jason, you want to start us out?
Uh, sure. Um, so I, I first want to thank the board for entertaining my application and inviting me to speak tonight. Um, I want to touch on three things in this elevator speech. One is, I want to, I prioritize or talk about the skills that I can bring to the board. Uh, many of those are in my, listed in my application. Um, I want to talk about my commitment to the Bath community. And then I want to talk about what I see as priorities for our community moving forward. Um, so in terms of my background, I'm a MSU graduate, uh, a triple Sparty, which means I have three degrees from Michigan State University. Um, my entire career, the past 18 years has been, um, uh, spent, I, uh, supporting community-based educational and health promotion initiatives, especially initiatives that meets the needs of underserved youth. Um, I've done that in the K-12 educational system as well as the university. Um, some skills that I, I've acquired during my professional career includes strategic planning, grant writing, uh, data collection and analysis, evaluation and assessments. And those of you who are not in the academic world, evaluation assessment is, uh, kind of like non-financial auditing. Um, I, I also have quite a bit of training and certification in leadership, um, group facilitation, community outreach. I'm also a certified master citizens planner through MSU, uh, extension. In terms of my commitment to Bath, I, I've lived in Bath for the past 12 years. Um, I, I live on Cliffs Road. It's the northern tier of our community. Um, it's rural. My wife and I, we have a farm. I, it's a small farm. Um, and I, I share a lot of the sensibilities of the individuals who live, um, in my community. Um, and so I have some of this academic as well as I down home, uh, perspectives. I, for the past seven years, I, I've been actively involved in our community. I first started, I, with, um, I participating in the Bath farmers markets. I, I supported it through fundraising. I served on the board. Um, I, in fact, I met Marie, uh, our supervisor, I, at a, I, I, it's called a Farm to Fork Dinner, which is a fundraising event for the farmers markets. Uh, in 2016, I joined the planning commission. Um, I, I was reappointed a couple of years ago by the last board. Uh, 2019, I joined the road committee and then outside of the township structures. I recently, back in, I think it was, uh, late 2019, um, volunteered to serve as moderator for the Bath Community News and Events Facebook page, uh, which gives me, I, quite a bit of insight into what people are thinking and feeling, uh, within our community. And I'll touch a little bit more on that in a bit. Um, so in terms of our priorities, I, you know, I, I think we need to ground ourselves in the fact that 2020 has been an extraordinary year. Um, between the pandemic and the, um, election, the presidential election. Um, and, and that's this, these extraordinary times have really, um, come to light, brought to light uh, the strengths, um, and some of the challenges that our community faces. Um, and I think it's incredibly important that we, we, um, uh, move forward with not only where we are currently, but where, how, how our community and how our society has changed in the past year. Um, and so one of the things I, I want to point out, and I think what we should do regularly is to point out the strengths that we have in our township. Um, I can't speak, uh, highly enough of Karen Hildebrandt, our superintendent, um, and the staff at our township in terms of navigating, I, I, this pandemic and how to keep the, the township operational during these times. Um, I, we've had, I, I very little interruption to our, the function of our boards. And from what I can see, we have greater participation on our boards and committees, uh, by our community members. And so that's a huge thing. I also want to, um, uh, point out Kathy McQueen, um, and Brenda and, you know, the staff and the volunteers who supported our election. This, we had an unprecedented election, um, with record turnout, a massive amount of absentee ballots, and all of this occurred, uh, quickly. And so I, I, trustee McQueen has been serving our community for decades, uh, has seen, I, I don't know how many different elections. Um, uh, and has been successful in all those we've, uh, and so we really need to honor her, uh, and that work. And so with those strengths and minds, I think we also need to think about our challenges. I, I, from what I see on social media, um, from what I see in, uh, dialogue among people is that, you know, our community is, I, um, polarized and we're fractured, you know, along political lines, um, and ideological lines. And I think it's incredibly important for our community to focus on how can we bridge people back together? How can we, uh, identify ways, uh, that we can come back to our shared set of values within our community? Not fight, not, you know, maintain toxicity, not threaten lawsuits against each other or the township. I think we really need to, you know, identify how we can come together. Um, and so, but the larger framework for this is that we're in uncertain times financially. You know, I, I, I anticipate we will have, you know, large stimulus, I, I, uh, packages that are passed through our township. But also, you know, we're under a massive amount of debt. And so there are going to be cuts and we don't know where those cuts are going to be. And so I think we need to focus on, um, I, how can we leverage the resources and the assets of our community to deliver the needed services? And so I, I, so I think first and foremost, I, I, and the board has recognized this. Uh, we need to, um, make strategic investments in high-speed internet. Uh, the pandemic and remote learning and remote, uh, uh, work, uh, has, uh, uh, highlighted just how poor our services.
Um. Jason, you're gonna, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
All right, all right. We have 13% of our population who doesn't have internets, uh, um, high-speed internets, uh, and those who do, it, it's poor. Uh, I think we need to monitor and maintain our critical infrastructure with a focus on our sewer system. We have a sewer plan that we need to, uh, maintain and monitor. Um, I think we need to continue updating our ordinances so that we have smart growth in those parts of our community that I, I, where we want growth while also maintaining the rural character in other parts of our community.
All right.
And so that's what I'd like to say. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, it's Guy. I said it wrong the first time. So it's Elsenheimer?
It is Elsenheimer.
All right, you're up next.
Okay, and I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I can't hear me.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, I am Guy Elsenheimer. I live at 15018 Center Road. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak as well. I'm going to basically highlight some of what you saw in the application, maybe add a few things and just put a few thoughts out there. My wife Anne and I have been residents of Bath Township for over 33 years. Our daughters attended, both of them, and graduated from Bath Community Schools. I have volunteered at coaching and supported our youth athletics, served with the Athletic Boosters. I've also been a member of the Theater Guild and the Bath United Methodist Church. I volunteered to assist and became, believe it or not, a qualified member of Girl Scout Troop Number 31. I am an SAL member of American Legion Post Number 412. Just to recap, I find it interesting that we're in this situation and many competitions in the U.S., as you know, and around the world, be it a NASCAR race or the Olympics, et cetera, there are certain rules that are followed during and even after the competition is completed. You notice even afterwards, after the awards are presented, the outcome sometimes changes. Say a NASCAR winner was found to have equipment on or in the vehicle that is not permitted, but that enabled them to win. The officials will remove the award and move the others in the race up one position. What they don't do is ask members of the audience if they would like the chance at the award. The audience didn't compete in the race. Putting that aside, my head is still in the ring. I feel I do bring a table, to the table, a very diversified career full of experiences that I believe can and will be a positive addition to the board. I have a strong work ethic and I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and do the work needed to get the job done. I'm not afraid of doing my homework. Can you imagine? It's an example of how much more I know about the Michigan Consolidated Law pertaining to elections. A lot more than I did a few months ago. I'm not a professional politician. I don't care to be one. I have no desire to use this appointment as a stepping stone to greater things as we have seen some in the past do. I try to finish whatever I start to the best of my ability. These are a few of my basic beliefs. They were on my campaign. I believe a common sense approach to most problems is usually the best direction to follow. I believe in transparency whenever possible. Good communication practices are a key factor to achieving this. I believe in accountability. We can't fix what we don't know is broke and therefore we need to own it. We can't fix it if we don't own it. Just a few key issues I see, and I agree with Jason on a couple of these, of course, dealing with the township right now that I look forward to helping to resolve. Obviously, internet service to the entire township is essential, is an essential need, especially highlighted during this time of global pandemic. The importance of committee and commission appointments is paramount to the success of Bath Township moving forward. Without these filled, no advancements or improvements can be expected. Again, good communication is critical to keeping residents informed and benefiting from all that our beautiful township has to offer. In closing, I was once asked in an interview, what was the one thing I had that no other applicant had relative? In closing, I was once asked in an interview, what was the one thing I had that no other applicant had relative to the open position? I was the only one that possessed a certification from the Automotive Service Excellence Association for Parts Specialist. The job was for parts department manager, and I got it. In this case, obviously, I'm the only one applying today who already has the approval of more than 3,000 residents requesting me to represent them as a trustee on the township board per their votes in a free election. Now, it's true, I ran on a different party ticket than anyone else in the township. But I most firmly believe that we as a board can best represent the whole of the township by combining our efforts together in unity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Elsenheimer. Greatly appreciate your time. Okay, Ms. Gardier? She's not unmuted, or is she muted? There you go.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you.
As Martin Luther King once said, "Now is always the time to do the right thing." You all know me. We've worked together over the last 10 years and working together collaboratively at your level and at the neighborhood level, at the community level, I think we've accomplished a lot. And it's always been an honor to work with all of you in partnership. Tonight, I'm going to withdraw my application in support of Guy. Before the general election, Friends of Park Lake had Meet the Candidates Night to discuss issues of importance to the community. All of you were invited. Guy was the only person who attended. He showed us during that process that he was interested in the community, that he was interested in making improvements in the community, that he has a passion to get things done. So I'm withdrawing my application in support of Guy. Thank you very much.
Okay, Drew. All right, Taylor, is there a Kendra Howard?
I do not see a name.
Drew today, Marie.
I'm sorry, what?
We got word today via email that she withdrew her application.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't see that. Okay, so she's withdrawn also. Okay. Well, Lisa, I guess you move right up the ladder. So, Ms. Mead, would you please?
Okay, I'm Lisa Mead, and I've been a Bath resident for about 28 years. I've worked at the Sewer Authority for 23 years, so I've worked very closely with the Bath Township Board and many boards, many employees through the years. Because I've worked at the Sewer Authority, I have a very vast knowledge of the accounting systems, of governmental procedures. And then I've also served as Secretary Treasurer on the American Legion Auxiliary. And through that, we've worked with the community, we've worked with Bath Township, doing many different community events. As far as what I hope to see, I would love to see, as others have stated, the better internet. But I'd also like to see us become more of a walkable community, which I don't think at this point we really are, more bike paths and walking areas, things like that. I'm keeping it short and sweet. I think everybody's tired and we can go on. Thank you.
All right, that puts us down to, thank you very much. That was, your elevator speech was short, but sweet. The, that leaves us then with three candidates, instead of the five that we originally started with, if I'm understanding all that's going on. So what we've been advised, because this is such an unusual way of doing business through the electronic media or Zoom, it's been advised that we try to whittle us down to at least two. So we're already at three. So what's your poison, guys? Is that something you want to continue with, or do you want to take votes? I personally think you should take votes, but that's up to you.
I'm ready to vote, Madam Supervisor.
Okay. And the rest? Mr. Benzy, Mr. Rosecrans, Mr. Wiswasser, what's your thoughts?
I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
I can vote.
Okay, so we have the three candidates. Now, I guess when you say you're ready to vote, are you ready to vote? Oh, Brian, go ahead.
I'm ready to put a motion forward if you're ready for that.
Yep, I am.
I move to appoint Jason Almarigi to the open vacancy on the board, with the term ending 2022, where he will have to run for the remainder of the term.
All right, that's one motion. Is there another?
You can only have one motion at a time.
Well, except for this instant, but are you, okay, you're trying to say then that Jason is the successor?
No, we have to, it has to be seconded and then discussion and then a vote.
I understand. It's like a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a second. Okay, so we need a record roll call vote?
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No. All right, it appears with five votes, we needed three, and someone else? I'm sorry. Okay. So we have, with five votes, we have three that we needed. You obviously have done it. So Jason, looks like you are the successor. Now, according to what we need to do, my understanding is that we're going to take a brief recess because Mr. Almarigi, did I say, I didn't say it right, I know that, is going to be needing to be sworn in. Is our clerk ready?
We have to call for recess, Marie, before you can do that.
I know. That's what I'm saying is, that's why I need to call the recess once I know she's ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, then a recess is what I'm calling. Our clerk is ready, so I guess with a Zoom, what our clerk does is do the oath for Mr. Almarigi, and again, I didn't say it right, for him to be able to accept it, understanding, you'll have to, now whether you know this or not, you need to sign the book, the book, in a short length of time, hopefully, either, I hope tomorrow, when you have an opportunity. Okay. You're shaking your head, so I'm assuming that's a yes.
That is a yes.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Brenda, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, but if I'm not mistaken, don't we have to have a vote, or vote to have a recess and we have to be motioned and then supported?
Treasurer Wiswasser, you correct on that?
Yeah.
Then I suggest you make the motion for the recess.
I would move the recess for the purpose of swearing in of the new trustee for Bath Township.
Are you ready? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed, but, you mean for the recess?
Yeah.
Okay, nope. I'm, yes, unanimous.
Are you ready, Jason?
I am, Brenda.
Okay, if you can raise your right hand, if you agree with what I say, please say aye when I'm done speaking. Okay. I just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Board of Trustees and and for the state, and and for the Township of Bath, County of Clinton, and State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
So now it's official. We have six for the next business that we have to take care of, which is really good. This is the municipal employee, now, do you, you know, this is going to make it a little tough for you.
Excuse me, Marie?
Yes.
You need to take and have a motion to take and call the board back into order? I would make the motion to call the board back to order.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Are we all set? Okay, Jason, all I was going to say to you is it's going to be a little difficult for you unless you have already received a packet, which I'm sure you haven't. So you're going to have to, I guess, follow along with, take the lead, or at least follow with the rest of them.
I thank you, Supervisor.
We have the municipal employee retirement, which was brought up, I think, by Karen on MERS. Emmy, correct?
Yes, that's correct. What you have before you are two documents that we are required by the municipal employee retirement system to file with them. And there is an addendum for the full-time fire chief, as well as one for the rest of the employees. So what I'm asking you to do is authorize me to complete, which is to sign these and then file them with MERS.
Any questions? And we'll take a record roll call vote. Whoop, hold on. Mr. Rosecrans, trustee Rosecrans, you have a question?
I move to authorize Karen to get the signatures.
So you're making the motion, so we need a second?
Port.
I, who's supported?
Jason.
Okay, good, good job. So can we take a vote? We need a record roll call vote?
Are you ready? Mr. Wiswasser?
Yeah.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Almar, I'm going to slaughter.
Almarigi, yeah.
Almarigi.
I'm going to get used to that.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have to phonetically write that out. All right, our next, is it okay to go on to the next one? The next one is the rezoning request. Someone going to make a motion?
If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Nick.
I move approval of the rezoning request for 7551 Coleman Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All right, record roll call vote?
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Almar?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yeah.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. Item D is the rezoning request. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning request for 15307 and 15309 Chandler Road.
Do I have a second? You got that?
Yep.
Right, we're going to do a record roll call vote?
Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yeah.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. We're going to get better at this. We have an introduction and a first reading. So we have a motion?
I move approval of the first reading of zoning ordinance 3167.
Thank you.
Port.
All right, we have, any any discussion on it? So we'll have a vote. Do a record roll call vote?
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yeah.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. Thank you. All right, our next one is appointments to committees. Is there a motion? No motion? Any seconds? No seconds? So that one that fails at this point, so oh, go ahead, Jason.
May I make a suggestion that we vote on each committee applicant individually, as opposed to all of them?
I, that's not an issue for me, so there was no motion to do any of it. So Jason has a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Brian.
I don't think that was a motion, I'm sorry.
I think he made a suggestion, and he was putting it, were you putting it in a motion form? Jason, or is that?
It was not a motion, it was a suggestion. I'm happy to make a motion, though. But it's out of order, so I don't know if you have a preference for doing this in order?
No, it should be in order. They've already, it's already been decided, so it's all, it's all right. Thank you for the suggestion. Okay. You have, or I have a question. With the contract, which apparently
Are we still on the appointment?
No, you are, no, there wasn't a second, it died.
There was, I'm sorry, I just heard Jason ask if he could make a motion and you told him no. Did I misunderstand that?
No, he said it was out of order, and I said
No, I think he means out of sequence, not as in out of order, Robert's Rules of Order.
Oh, I don't, what did you mean, Jason? I'm sorry, you said out of order.
I, out of sequence, yes, that is, and so it wouldn't be in the order of the listed applicants
Correct.
or suggestions. And so I just wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with that before making a motion.
You're a board member now. It doesn't matter what we're comfortable with.
It's true.
Well, thank you. So I would like to drop down to the Planning Commission. And I'd like to make a motion for trustee Fewan Bliss to be appointed as the board representative to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? My only discussion with this would be, if I'm understanding what you're doing, Jason, is that you're taking a portion of that, okay, no, whatever you guys decide, you get it. So that's a portion. We have a second, so now we need a vote. Need a record roll call vote?
Okay. Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Ooh.
Other than that. Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Fewan Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yeah.
Ms. Howe?
I would say no, and my reason for no is an explanation for that would be the fact that that's only a portion of Planning Commission. But that's, I understand it, but I'm still a no vote. All right, was there anything else? Oops, I got a hand.
I'd like to nominate Wiswasser for trustee for Skoma.
Second.
Okay. Did you, first of all, and I understand, because here's a Did you, first of all, and I'd understand because here's a discussion, but you've got a second. Is that something that you wanted, Steve? Because you initially said you didn't want to do that.
You know, we're going to wade into this baby, so I'm not going to hold back.
I'm at it.
Okay, I do feel that, as I wrote in an email earlier this week, that professional people, i.e. township managers and superintendents are vital to this job because of the budgetary aspects to it. The day-to-day things that go on with it, ensure the knowledge of what it costs to take and take care of this facility, as well as the safety concerns that go along with it. I think we all have been subject in the last few weeks here, we've talked about the Flint water thing. Frankly, honestly, and myself, I take this pretty serious. I don't see the Southern Flint County Municipal Utility Authority any differently. This is a utility, we have to take due diligence to take care of it, and our main professional person we have that we have picked to be our superintendent, which I'm going to go out on a limb here. If you remember right, when we did this back in the fall, when the former Wateechia left, the clerk and I both voted no for Karen. I think Karen has stepped to the plate, she's done her job, and I think to jerk the rug off underneath her and not allow her to continue her work over there, I think is wrong. I will not serve on this board with a supervisor. Nothing personal to you, Murray. I've served on the board with a supervisor before. I served 13 years over there, I've got a lot of experience over there. I don't find it being effective to do that. I think the two elected officials over there is not the answer for our township, and that's my opinion. So that's how I feel. I've communicated that in an email. It got a little twisted up quite a few times, about 10 times, but that's the bottom line, and I said the same thing basically in my email. But I do appreciate the confidence that board gives me and my abilities and my knowledge and experience I've had in 20 years of doing this stuff. But it's bigger than me, and it needs to be done in a way that's right. We have the second highest SEV in this county. We provide more money in the county than anybody else in a lot of different ways, in commercial ways especially. And I think that we need to be represented with a professional person, our superintendent, and that's what she is. Thank you.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now. I'm not so clear the email, and when you speak of, you know, the 20 years' experience, somebody had to start somewhere, so our former supervisor didn't have any experience. Karen didn't, not that she's not doing it, but at the time she started, there was no experience. So I'm not real clear on this committee as to exactly what you're saying, and I certainly understand that. But, and hang on a second, guys, because I'm still in the discussion, I see you. I've got Ryan and I have trustee Bliss and trustee Benzy. So, hang on a second. So I'm understanding what you're saying, but the email stated you didn't want to do it, so that's not so now. You do want to do this. I want to make sure.
That's not what I said. I said, no, I'm not interested in serving with the township supervisor.
Yeah, I got that part.
If the board still choose to appoint the superintendent, then that would be a different, that would be a different state or different thing. But the bottom line is, is you need to have some stability there, as somebody who's there every day, who's been there every day. And you need to have, you need to move forward with that. I ain't going to lie to you, it all comes back to the treasurer's office anyhow, or a lot of it does, because of the history, because of the cost. You know, you know what it costs to run a lift station in the community, you know what it costs to take, what an REU is, you know how many REUs you have, you know what you got to have to take to make everything work. And you're putting too many, too much elected people who can be voted out of office, who can be thrown out of office, who could go out and any election can be removed. And when you lose that, I think this township has already realized this. When you lose that, you start from zero and you start over. I ain't going to sugarcoat this. When I came back here in 2016, meaning no disrespect to the board members that was here during the time I was gone, the sewer fund was next to broke. And we had enough money to make our bond payments, and that was it. And I went into superintendent Wateechia's office and supervisor Phillips's office, and I said, we're done here. We're not writing any more checks, we're not doing anything until we take and fix the financials of the sewer system. You cannot operate a sewer system on $700,000 in the bank account, and when you have, you have a million dollars a year in monthly processing fees, you have eight bond payments now that total $850,000. And this is all very, very vital, it's very important. You need to take and keep an eye on it, and the only way you keep an eye on it is if you have your township manager or superintendent there every day dealing with it and understanding it. When you take and take them away, you're back to having elected people there, and it doesn't work. It's not a good system. I'm not saying you can't have one elected person, you can be there with the superintendent. I don't really care about that. But I'm saying you don't need two elected people over there.
Okay, now I'm a little clearer on what you're saying. All right. Ryan, you're second. Go ahead, trustee Benzy. Hang on, Ryan, you'll be next.
My first?
Yes, you had your hand up first.
I have a friendly amendment to Al's motion. I would like to replace Steve Wiswasser with Superintendent Hillibrand.
Port.
That be okay, Alan?
No, you got to do it.
No, you're going to have, you have to, no, you would replace me, which is okay.
No, no. Not treasurer, treasurer Wiswasser choosing not to serve on the sewer authority.
Well.
I'm requesting replacing him with Karen Hillibrand. Our superintendent.
Okay.
Alan?
No, now, is that in the form of a motion, or is that in form?
That's an amendment.
So, okay, so we're doing a friendly amendment, okay? Okay, trustee Bliss, just hang on, Rose.
Alan has to approve that or agree to it.
To a friendly amendment?
Yes, you have to agree to it.
Okay.
He had his hand up, I don't know if he does or not.
Well, we haven't heard from trustee Bliss yet. You want to, should we wait or not? Go ahead, Alan. Hey, I don't care.
I understand.
In precedence over mine.
That's, hey, whatever. Go ahead, Alan.
As I understand, Steve, he's willing to serve with Karen. And I, so I think what Joe needs to do is put Karen along with Steve as an amendment.
I can go that way.
Okay, so the amendment. All right, you guys, the amendment that Joe has just made, or trustee Benzy has just made, is a friendly amendment. He's saying that you have to agree to it. You're not agreeing to it. You would like to amend his amendment. Correct?
Well, if that's where you read it, I can do that. I move, I move to amend it by adding Steve Wiswasser and Karen Hillibrand to the SCUMA committee.
Was I the person who seconded that motion?
I don't know. What were you doing, Ryan?
I'll accept that friendly amendment to my second.
All right, so. Madam Clerk, do you, you want me to repeat? Oh, go ahead. Brian?
I'm sorry, are you ready for discussion? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, the discussion is what we were talking about initially, but they had to put the friendly amendment, you seconded it. Do you have a discussion on this, on your second?
Be a discussion after.
I have a discussion on the issue.
Is that what you want to do? Is that, I thought you wanted to discuss, but whatever, what do you want to do? I'm sorry.
Ryan, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, you're.
Can you hear now?
A little bit.
I have you, Madam Supervisor.
It's still pinging on me, but.
The first part, we heard Madam Supervisor.
Yeah. Try it one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Now that's better.
I'm seeking clarity. Are all of the other township superintendents and managers that are members of SCUMA on the board?
On a board?
No, on SCUMA.
No, that's because there are 10 members.
I know, I'm not asking about the number, I'm asking, have all of the other member entities put their managers?
Yes, Jennifer, manager Tubbs of Watertown Township serves, Dan Koss for the City of DeWitt serves, and Andrew Dismick, I probably just ruined his name from the Township of DeWitt serves. You are correct.
Okay, so it's wholly appropriate for that to be you.
So is that, you're not asking for Bath's representation, you're asking for the 10 members, right?
I'm asking about the other member entities, the other municipalities that are part of SCUMA, but I think Karen has answered that.
Okay, that's a great little sign. We should. Okay, Fred, we get it. That's a, what do they call that, bombing? All right, so I'm understanding what you're saying, Ryan, because Karen answered it, which had to do with the other 10 members, not just Bath, correct?
Right.
Okay. And Karen answered. Okay, so we are now at the friendly amendment for the amendment of the amendment. So do you understand what we're asking, Clerk, or should we repeat it? Do you think I can repeat it?
We're going to mentor, I have Steve and Karen on the board, on the SCUMA board.
Can't hear her very well.
We're going to have Steve and Karen on the sewer authority board.
Okay, that's the amendment to this appointment, correct? Just want to make sure everybody's understanding.
That's the motion.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
It's already been seconded.
Who seconded?
Already been seconded.
Well, Ryan, did you second, all right, never mind. No, I'm not going to go into it. It's been seconded, so now we take a vote.
Am.
Yes.
Jason. J, J A.
Amorigi.
Yes.
Thank you. Fewans Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosekranz?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Did you want me to give a discussion on what I meant by exio officio? And the reason I'm asking that is because I had that. So I don't have to do that now, is that?
I have a question about your intentions with that.
Right. Mike, thank you, I appreciate that, Ryan. So should I have a motion so we can have a discussion?
I don't need a motion to have a discussion.
Yeah, well, yeah, we do, okay.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we do, but that's okay, whatever, whatever you wanted to, we can sit and go back and forth. You said, I said, but that's all right. What I was looking for with this was some clarity of an exio officio. And that's something that only you guys can do, because that's in our, it's in her contract, and statutorily, it speaks to it. So there are certain committees that are already picked that our superintendent attends. So, and there's a voting question with that. So if your superintendent is only monitoring certain problems with committees, or monitoring certain committees, should the vote be allowed? And I'm not exactly sure what that is. Appendix A, I'm sure you all have a copy of it, explains that. You don't have a copy of it?
No, I don't.
Oh, it should have been in the packet.
I didn't happen to see it.
Okay, look for.
I wish you'd remember the bottom of these pages would make it easier.
Yes, it would. I have a hard time with that one myself. Well, it is there. You put it in there, didn't you, Karen, her whole contract?
Yes.
Yeah.
Whole contract, or just that?
No, well.
The whole thing, it's the last two pages of my contract.
Well. Okay, in your appendix A, it speaks to, this is what it was agreed upon, which is in print H, so it's appendix A, print H. And it reads, to be a member of exio officio of all committees of the township board. So my question, and this is the explanation I think you're looking for, Ryan, if it's not, please let me know, is that with that explanation, that means all our committees. So our superintendent is on all our committees. Does that help or not?
It does, that, I just don't know if that was the intent when folks signed her contract, was for her to be a voting member on every committee. That's what I'm seeking clarity.
Well, that I don't know, I can only go by contract. I'm sorry, go ahead, trustee Benzy.
The superintendent in Bath Township has been in the past a member of all committees, but not a voting member. Okay, so they don't have a vote, but they're allowed to go to their meetings, and they're allowed to speak as a board member, but they don't vote. If that's helpful.
Well, it is, and it's true, you can have either way with exio officio. You either can give a vote, or you can.
That's what it's been in the past. They haven't had a vote.
All right, so her contract then needs to be changed, right, or not?
You know, it was reviewed by our legal staff.
No, I understand.
You might have them reinterpret that for you, but I don't think their intent was to change that.
Okay. Who's intent, all I'm saying is, an exio officio is a person who, it's a Latin term, and it's a person who is assigned to a committee by the fact that they are a position, or they have a position. Some exio officios are allowed to vote, some are not. So what you're saying is that.
In the past, ours has not voted. In the past, they have not had a vote.
Karen, is that?
I would echo Joe, what trustee Benzy is saying. My predecessors attended board meetings, or excuse me, committee meetings, such as the planning commission. So have I. Chairman Kramer always acknowledges me and lets me participate in discussion, but my predecessors nor I have ever had a vote.
Then, that's what needs to be stated, that there is no vote for an exio officio. I mean, with, yes, go ahead, trustee, treasurer.
If you look at section 10 of the appendix A, and you scroll down to the letter G, it says that the superintendent has the right to attend all meetings of the township board with the right to take part
Correct.
in discussion without the right to vote.
I understand that, and that's true. She doesn't vote. Our superintendent does not vote at our meetings.
That carries through, in my understanding, when it says, the meetings of the township board, and my thought of that process, if you're going to change something, I guess you could change that to all boards of the township as well, I guess, but that pretty well seals the deal with me right there. Maybe I don't understand it.
No, when, usually, I'm sure, usually what happens is they're listed. Which is what this is. which is what this is. But it's saying, "To be a member, exio officio of all committees of the township board." So if I'm understanding what the board wants to do, there is no vote that needs to take place, whether it's history, or it doesn't make any difference. It's what your language is in the contract, or what you decide to do. So as the board, you're deciding that the superintendent can pick whatever committee that they want to attend to, whether it's a planning, or senior services, or, you know, rec, you know, the parking rec, whatever it is, that the attendance can be there, but there can be no vote. Am I understanding? No, go ahead trustee Bliss.
Are you interested in changing the way that it has been currently working? Is that why it's coming up to us like this?
Well, it makes it really hard with your committees, because if she has a vote, which you're saying she doesn't, so that, that's good, that makes it so much easier. That's one more vote. If a committee has seven votes, or seven members, you have one exio officio in six communities. So it does make a difference in the committees, and that's what I'm trying to work out. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I mean, have you had a conversation with Karen about this?
No.
That might help, because I think she's got that historical knowledge about how things are functioning, unless we're trying to change it moving forward.
I, I understand the history. What I'm trying to say is that statutorily, or in writing, or verbally, verbally doesn't work. History only works up to a degree. The language that has to be interpreted. And I think, I think you got a hand up, Gary. Go ahead.
What I was going to say is that, and I understand that you believe history doesn't work, but I,
nothing doesn't work.
My, my position has never affected quorum. My position has never affected not having a vote. If I go to their meetings or not, they still have, like, the Planning Commission still has seven members. I'm not required to, and neither do my counterparts, because I've asked them, attend every meeting if there is something that we are requested to attend for. If I, if I scan an agenda for the Planning Commission and see something that's of interest to me, or I believe is very important, I will attend, or at the request of the committee. But I, my, my attendance doesn't impact whether or not they can have a meeting, and I have no vote, so it's, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
No, that's, that's, I understand. So back to Ryan's issue, what I'm looking for is some form of an explanation that's more than a verbal, or more than a history, or more than.
My concern is, if, if we're not talking about things you're proposing to change, we're just recertifying the things that already exist, and, you know, in my opinion, we have just bigger fish to fry in the township than
Of course.
recertifying things that already exist.
Well, I'm not sure, okay. Alright, one, it doesn't exist. This, number one.
It doesn't.
Two, no, it doesn't.
She's not attending them and not voting now, nor did Dan, nor did Troy.
That's correct.
Change.
No, no, what, okay. And I'm, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is that there is an exio officio position. You're going to be an exio officio position on a planning committee, because you're assigned to that committee.
No.
Yep, okay.
No, Ryan's gonna be a voting member of the Planning Commission. He's one of the seven.
Okay, that's exactly what I'm trying to point out.
Karen is not a, Karen is not a voting member of the Planning Commission, but she will attend and speak on issues.
So what the board is deciding is that there will be no voting for an exio officio, a person who sits on the board, Karen who sits on the board as a superintendent. Is that correct?
This was decided long ago. This board is not deciding that. This has already been settled by previous boards.
Then I would like to have you point that out to me in writing.
You want me to send you an email that says that?
Nope, I want the history that goes with that. Go ahead.
I just gave you the history, and you told me the history isn't what you were looking for.
And no, you told me.
I just don't want to turn our wheels, read, I mean, if you would have asked Karen, she would have told you how this works.
No, no. What you said to me was that there has never been, there hasn't been, and what I'm saying to you is, I want to see it in writing. It's important that this board put whatever it does in writing, and it isn't done history after history after history, because sometimes that's not always correct. For example, let me give you a good example, well, Jason, hang on, go ahead. I, I'm Randy.
I, thank you. I, I motioned to lay on the table the discussion of exio officio status.
And you went laying on the table for how long? Because laying on the table.
For one calendar year.
For a year? I don't know that you can, no, you can't second, because I'm not sure that's a legal, I'm not sure you can do that.
Well, you not being sure doesn't mean I can't second it.
Thank you, and neither is your history, which doesn't mean I have to accept a history. So I guess we're right at the same place. You want that for a year. Your motion is that you want this to be laid on the table for one year. I think according to Robert's rules, you don't hold it more than so many meetings, so that needs to be looked at. I'll absolutely lay it on table, but I'm not sure for a year. You want me to look it up now?
My understanding is, we have a motion and a second.
I'll call the question.
You call a question. Do you want me to look it up?
Next meeting.
Thank you. That's exactly correct. Is that, is that understood?
He called the question, we're supposed to vote.
You are supposed to vote, but he also made the motion that it would be for the next meeting. He's laying on the table.
I do not modify my motion.
Okay. So your motion, I'm sorry, go ahead. Trustee Rosecreans?
All I want to do is you just bring it back to the next meeting. That don't mean that it doesn't still be laid on the table.
I, I'm happy to adjust my motion to lay it on the table until the next meeting.
I can support that.
Thank you. I think that's common sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we need a vote then.
Murray, a little more discussion from the treasurer?
Well, we have the motion. It's been seconded. Go ahead, treasurer.
When, when you bring this back at the next meeting,
Yes.
since the Board of Review is a statutory commu, committee.
We're not looking at Board of Review.
I want, hear me out.
Oh, okay.
I, I would also like you to look up in the rulebook and make sure for certain, because you as a supervisor, as I understand the way the Charter Township law is written, are, is, are, excuse me, I'm having a problem here.
No, got it.
You as a supervisor is the chief assessing, listed as the chief assessing officer in, in the township. That doesn't necessarily mean that you do the assessing, but quite frequently, I've seen supervisors attend Board of Review. I'm not certain, and I don't mean to pull the monkey wrench in everybody's thing here, but I'm not certain that Superintendent Hildebrandt is an exio officio member of the Board of Review, and I think you need to look at that as well. Because you do have the power of, of being the chief assessing officer in the township as the supervisor. Doesn't mean you do any assessing, but it, but it is, I believe, and you look that up, you'll find that that's, that's a true statement. And I think that needs to be cleared up, because there is certain thing, that's a statutory committee, just like what the Planning Commission was, and the appointment for Ryan Fules Bliss was a statutory appointment, and it needed four votes in the board to do that, which you got. And there's about, I don't know if there's any other statutory committees that we're talking with tonight here or not. I don't believe there is. But we didn't finish our committee stuff. I, I tried to get my hand up, and nobody would notice that earlier, but that needs to be looked into, and you need to bring that back to the next meeting as well, because you need to look and make sure that you're not supposed to, by law, be a part of the assessing of the township, because you are the elected superintendent. I think that's about one of the very few things that the superintendent's duties doesn't take into effect, and I would hope that our, our non-elected superintendent wouldn't be out working with the assessing. I would hope that she would be. Because the assessor technically works for the superintendent, if you think about this. So I think you need to look at this, by your, when you're bringing this all back, and you need to bring it back as a package. I'm just giving you a discussion and, and insight, but I think you need to look at that particular one right there, as well.
I'd be more than happy to give you the insight for the Board of Review with regard to a supervisor. Absolutely not an issue.
I'd like to see it in writing, too.
Nope, it's there. Yep, absolutely. In fact, the statute's there. Absolutely, not a question.
Thank you.
So you're more than welcome. So what we're looking at, at this point, then, is some kind of a vote. Is that correct? I mean, I got kind of lost on. We're looking at the amendment. We're looking at amendment with a friendly amendment to. I'm kind of lost.
Lay it on the table for one year with discussion at the next meeting.
That's. Is there a second for that? I, that's.
There was a second.
Okay, so now you need a vote. Okay, Karen, can we have a real call vote? Madam, try clerk?
Rosecreans?
I, I guess.
I guess.
Miss Weser?
Yes.
Benzie?
Yes.
Al Marichi?
Yes.
Really good.
Few ones bliss?
Yes.
And Howe?
Yes. I think we're on new business. Would anybody disagree with that? Which would be item 11. That's the introduction and discussion. Does that look right? I'm not hearing any objections. That must be right.
Planner Topelski is also with us on this.
Thank you.
Oh, you're right in the middle.
I was waiting to get.
I'm looking for you over here on the other corner.
I'm not hiding from you, I promise.
No.
So yes, this is the first time this has been brought to the Board of Trustees. This is a proposal that was, that is for a medical marijuana provisioning center, grow and processor, with a separate coffee shop with a drive-through. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission unanimously at our last meeting. And as you can see in the packet, I'm trying to scroll all the way down there, we have my staff report, providing information as well as comments from our relevant reviewing agencies. And if there are any questions about this, I'm happy to, you see, be happy to answer those. I did just want to get one point of clarification, likely from Superintendent Hildebrandt. I do see that their license application materials are included after the special use permit materials. Those, I'm assuming, we're treating as two separate issues for this, though, correct?
I put them on this time as one issue, but they will be broken out at the next meeting.
Okay, right, because they're, the, the voting will.
Two issues.
Okay. Alright, so if there are any questions about this proposal, I'm happy to answer them. And of course, the applicant is on the Zoom meeting, so if you have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer as well.
Doesn't seem to be any questions. Okay. For an introduction, then, for the Rising Forest LLC Special Use Permit. Thank you, Nick. Greatly appreciate it. Now, just so I'm understanding, the next process for this is this will go in for for us to make a determination?
This will be on the next packet.
Right, but what will it be under?
Items for action.
Okay. And so we have to vote on it?
Correct.
Okay. Now we have an item for action. Is that correct? Being the Bath Charter Township Emergency Operations Plan? Now, I'm assuming, you all had a chance to read this, except Jason, he doesn't have a a packet.
I, I do have a packet.
Oh, okay, good man. Then you can look up the Bath Charter Township Emergency Operation Plan. It says, "Support Emergency Operation Plan." For me, before I go into any other information with it, this is something I have to sign. The superintendent does this, or the supervisor does this every four years. I read this plan, and it appeared to me that there was some overlapping of what somebody was supposed to do. Do you all understand an emergency situation? I'm sure you must. This one is addressing an issue of extreme emergency. Okay, that's what this is for. This goes to the county, which then sends it to the state, which sends it to the feds, federal government. So this particular piece deals solely with Bath Township. This is what we are supposed to do if there's an emergency. Does that make any sense up to this point?
Yeah.
Okay, so, understanding, it has to have my signature on it, which I will put in. I did talk with Tom Helms, who is the Director for the Emergency Management Authority. He and I had quite a discussion, because I wasn't completely understanding what this was about, other than the fact I was supposed to put a signature on it. So he mentioned that this is like a living document. It is, and it is. What he means by that is that periodically you update, or you change it, or you do whatever you need to do with it. Forfitting Bath Township. For me, the superintendent's signature meant that it was okay. I will sign this. The discussion that he and I had was, because it is a living document, that this document can be submitted at any time. When you change it, which we did, there were some typographical errors in it, and I think, Taylor, did you fix that? Yeah, okay. So when she reviewed it, and she saw and fixed the typographical errors for, again, our township. This, again, will be sent up, and I have no problem, you know, signing it as long as it's understood, and, and Mr. Helms explained this very nicely. Anybody can do this. Anybody can return this document at any time. Any changes, any updates. What he would do, for example, if, if this came to him again in May, it would go to the state, well, actually, it'd go to the county, goes to the state, and then it goes to the federal government, so that they have a copy of what Bath Township's going to do if there's an emergency. So that helped me a lot to understand that we can submit changes to it at any time. So Mr. Helm would be happy, in fact, he was very happy to hear that we're actually going to be looking at it, and that most likely there'd be some changes. What I did do when I went through it, and I don't know if Karen put it in there or not, I'm sure she did. She added her list, which I was very grateful, so thank you very much, Karen. That was much needed. I put a list together from my readings of what this was. He's very happy to receive any changes that we want to make directed at Bath Township. So I'm, what I'm suggesting at this time is, as a living document, please hang on to it. Please read it. I don't obviously need to memorize it, but it is something that's really important for what Bath would do if, in fact, there was some sort of an emergency. How we would take care of it. That's my only discussion with this, and that's why that's here. That's the only reason it's here, because again, I don't know that you've ever, maybe you've seen it, I have no idea. You don't have to agree or disagree, other than the fact that you do have to vote on the fact that there were changes, whether they were typo changes or, you know, lists that have been added that will be sent to it. So I am going to request that there be a record roll call. I have to have a second on that. But that was my explanation of why that was here. Do you have anything, Karen, that you'd like to add to it?
Just that every municipality in Clinton County has one of these and goes through the same process each time a new supervisor is elected.
Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you. So I, I, I'm sorry I haven't had a chance to read through this, but has, have the chiefs of the police and fire departments had a chance to review this and comment?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and they're, they're comfortable with this as is?
They have, they have been comfortable with this since its inception in 2013. So, yes.
Chief Linda Mulder and I sat with Supervisor Howe and went line by line. So yes, they are.
Yep. It was my decision, just so you know, it was my decision to separate or to add the list to make it more readable. When you read it, you'll see, you'll, you'll understand. Keeping in mind that this is specifically for Bath Township as to what our responsibilities are supposed to be. If some, heaven help us, nothing will ever happen. Nothing has ever happened, but nobody knows.
One last question, and the, the changes that were made to this document were more grammatical and structural, not substantive?
Oh, no, there's no substance changing, other than the listing. And Mr. Helms and I had a long discussion with that. Absolutely nothing changes on the county's end. Zero. This all has to do with what we would do. Okay. Trustee Bliss, go ahead. You had your hand up. You still?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the municipal support emergency operations plan as presented.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have, anybody have a second?
I think Jason did.
I'll second it.
It worked. Somebody seconded. All right, so we need a record roll call vote. That's appreciated.
Al Marigi?
Yes.
She's getting better.
Westwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Fewens Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Okay, where are we? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. In addition to staying updated on COVID activities, it is now my understanding that the COVID strain that has been, I, I won't say long awaited, because it's, it's a terrible strain that travels much faster than the strain that's currently in our environment, has been located in Washington County. As a result, our staff, which I'm very thankful for a tremendously diligent staff that works to keep each other safe. And I, I really am, because it could be a lot worse. So we are going to be diligent with our practices. We still have some people that are still yet working from home through February 1st. Any work, according to the governor, that can be done remotely should be done remotely. As for the rest of our operations, I try to update you weekly in the Friday Report. But there is an immense amount of tax money that's coming through the township at this point. We've also had an audit on our elections from the general election that is being conducted statewide, and we were selected to be part of that. In addition, I continue to monitor the state of the economy, not only in Michigan, but in the United States. Our revenue estimating conference recently is predicting that we are recovering at a, a much higher rate that was than initially thought would be by the governor. And revenues continue to increase, which is very good news for the township that receives a large portion of revenue sharing. In addition, I hope that this isn't accurate and we are able to recover sooner, but the felt, the, the economic effects of COVID are estimated to take three to four years to recover from. So I know that Trustee Fewens Bliss said that he was also monitoring the revenue estimating conference, and I know that it's a topic on all of our minds because it impacts the monies that we get here locally. But it, for, for now, the, the news is good. I hope it continues. It seems as though Bath Township has been a bit resilient. I know that there are grants now available for some of our small businesses that are coming out through the county and the state. I will keep sharing those with Taylor so that we can keep putting those on Facebook and our website. Because recovery, especially in Bath Township, as Steve said, we send a lot of dollars to the county. And we are a big township and our recovery matters to this area. So we will continue to monitor and make sure we're doing the right things to help support the local economy in Clinton County as well as in the tri-county region. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Oh, is that the end of your report?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I thought, okay. Well, okay. Public statement two. Do we have anyone, Taylor?
If anyone would like to make a public statement at this time, they can use the raise hand function. They can turn their video on to physically raise their hand or dial star nine to raise their hand. Rick Curtis, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. So we need to do something about the Zoom meetings because I wanted to make a statement in the first public comment. I wasn't allowed to. It, I kept pushing the raise your hand button. Several people had mentioned on the Facebook stream that they weren't able to get through and that they were frozen out. And there, there were a lot of people who wanted to speak and didn't get a chance to. There are things that I could have added to this discussion that you might have taken, taken into consideration before you'd have pointed Jason Amerigi as the, on the township board. For one thing, being a divisive, racist, homophobic person on Facebook certainly does not qualify you to sit on the township board. He has done nothing but do Jack's bidding, speaking out about both you and Marie, you and me, Marie, during the election last year. During Jack's bidding, he sat on the, on the DDA and did everything he could to sabotage it. And it was by design. It was all to make me look bad and talk bad about anybody but Jack Phillips. Now the election's over. Marie, you won. Again, congratulations. I'd be more than happy to do whatever I can for the township. But that's something you should have known beforehand. That, that's something that you should have known. It's also illegal for a Planning Commission member, voting member, to vote both on the same issue at the Planning Commission level and at the board level. That is illegal. That vote is null and void. So when you talk about, it, it's also like the attorney was mentioning, I'm not who, sure who she was representing, but the Planning Commission passed an ordinance for medical marijuana that would benefit one person and only one. That's illegal. They've been told many times about this. They said, well, we asked our lawyer and the lawyer says that he disagrees with that. Well, maybe one of us should look it up and maybe we should check our lawyers too, because you're going to find yourselves in some lawsuits here. Also, I'm really disgusted that we couldn't have three people vote to do the right thing. I'm, I don't love Guy Elsenheimer. I don't follow, I don't espouse his Republican viewpoints at all. Everyone knows that. I'm a Democrat. I'll probably die being a Democrat. But he won this election by default over the township screw-up, and now we're going to go right down the blue loop again and spend a whole lot of a whole lot of attorney fees defending a piss-poor decision that was made by this board. I'm, I'm really disgusted. I'm really disheartened and I, I, I thought better of you. I thought you would do the right thing. Thank you.
If, if I may, I just wanted to point out that the Michigan laws surrounding medical and adult-use marijuana allow for municipalities to regulate the time, manner, and place in which marijuana establishments are located and operated. And that the restrictions within our ordinance comply with that law. So I respectfully disagree with Mr. Curtis's assumptions.
Fred Bowling, did you have your hand raised a second ago?
No, he just had a sign.
No, he, I saw a hand a second ago. Maybe not. If anyone else would like to make a public statement at this time, they can raise their hand or dial star nine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Fred, can you hear us?
Hello, hi, my name is Fred Bowling. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You can.
Yes, okay. I think it's because our internet sucks so horribly that we're having such a horrible Zoom meeting. But I really wanted to say a bunch of different topics, but it's gone on quite some time. And I don't want to say anything for Guy.
Losting.
I think his connection is a little unstable. You should be unmuted now, Fred. Go ahead.
Okay, should I start over? Did anyone hear anything?
We, we heard most of that, I think. We heard up to Guy, I believe.
Okay. Sorry about that. I, I, again, I just want to, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to have an office in East Lansing where I have gig internet, so I know it's not me. I'm screaming with internet, and let me tell you, it's a doggone game changer. But anyway, I, I wanted to talk about a couple of things real quick. You know, I'd sent a bunch of emails on trying to get, see if Bath had applied for the government grants that were available. I sent the email out on 12/31 because I had found out via Facebook, the community Facebook page from Will Tyler White, that there was some governments that were, some government grants that were presented to Bath and Bath, Bath applied or didn't apply for them, but qualified for them. And I was trying to see if Bath was able to take advantage and, and, and try and, and make an application, but I didn't hear really back from anybody right away. I did hear back from Marie and I appreciated that, and she told me that it kind of went over to, on some other folks. I did, I, I didn't have the correct email for Kevin, but I did hear back from him on the 6th. And everybody wants to know, I, I mentioned in my original email where the information was. It was on a Facebook post on your community page that was entitled Bath Internet. But Kevin's not an internet, or not a Facebook fan. I did hear back last Saturday on the 17th, so that's like 18 days after I posted this email to the entire Board of Trustees. Also requesting for this information that I had originally put out on the original email. And I, and I don't think that Will Tyler White is a stranger to you folks. He's got that information. Well, nonetheless, the, the, the answer is no. Bath, for some reason or another, never chose to apply for these grants that would help us pay for some internet to some rural areas in our township and maybe at the same time boost the internet to the rest of us, because again, that's why this Zoom meetings don't go that great, because I think our internet in general is not fantastic. And I think really good internet would help everybody. I can't imagine trying to homeschool a child at my house where I live on 8256 Cutler Road on my internet service. I currently pay for two DSL services and quite often my LTE on my phone is faster. Nonetheless, to, to move on, the internet issue is the internet issue. I want to mention that our community website, that is a community website. That's our Bath community. Gosh, I'm not the most innocent guy because I've engaged in some, and, and some nasty behavior as well, I guess, but someone really needs to do something about this, because if anyone looks at this, we look like just trash. We're, we're just horrible insults and fighting and national politics and things that really have nothing to do with community. I'm a member of some other Facebook sites like the Lansing Foodies, because I, I really enjoy food frankly. And when you put a post on there, it goes in for pending and someone has to approve your post. I think I could just make some incredible threats on the Bath site. It wouldn't matter. Nobody's watching it. There's no rules. I think it makes our community looks trashy. And, and, and we're not. We're a good community. We're an awesome community. We've got some awesome people that do some really awesome things for some people. I don't know if anyone watches that, that, that website, but you certainly should as township members. Corey Larnar, one of the key of the city, so to speak, from doing so much wonderful things for people, and that's fantastic. But then it's ruined. And I'm not, this isn't, this is, this is incredibly political, but it's not right wing or left wing. It's both. There's just some nasty stuff being said, and I, I think our community website should be about our community. And I think if you're not posting about our community, it shouldn't be on there. I think other people looking at our community would probably think much higher, highly, more highly of us if we weren't arguing and calling names and, and things to that effect. And again, this goes both ways. It's not one side or the other. The last thing I want to talk about is Guy. What the heck just happened? I mean, I was here on, on the previous Zoom meeting, and then that was a bit of a train wreck as well, frankly, but Marie had mentioned on that, that to release the letter from the attorney to, well, I never saw anything. Nobody saw anything. We're not communicating to our people. And here we are two weeks later. We've already voted in and sworn in and the guy's already in the office. I feel like I've just been railroaded as heck as, as a citizen. No offense to Mr. Al Marigi, frankly, I may have voted for him instead of Guy. I don't know, but you know, I've been racing dirt bikes and I'm, I'm sure Marie knows that. She's heard my noise for years. Anyhow, you know, the, the fourth place guy gets disqualified if he cheated and cut at a corner or didn't have the right dirt bike on or didn't have his numbers or whatever. Guess what happens? The fifth place guy takes fourth. And, and, and I had written that down even prior to Guy's news. So I kind of, kind of disappointed. I, I, I'm kind of disappointed in the township for, for doing that. Frankly, guys, I think that you should have done the right thing. I don't give a crap about what some stinking attorney said. Someone's got to come after you. And, and, and come after you for doing the right thing and letting the fifth place guy take the position. Come on. There's not, there's, there's not a jailable offense. Just go for it. It's kind of like speeding down the road. You make a decision. You do it knowing that you might get caught. So I, I, I guess that's about it as far as my notes. Let's, I, I'd like to make Bath a better place. I'm not saying Bath wants to grow. A lot of people want to keep Bath just the way it is. I'm not sure the marijuana business is the way to go, but I own a business in Bath. We're moving largely because of the sewer system and, and to have enough space and not really feeling wel, feeling welcome over the years, but we're moving to a larger facility at some point in the near future anyway. But come on, and that's okay. Maybe the beauty of Bath is, is that it's small and, and, and the taxes are low and so on and so forth, but I'd gladly pay some more taxes for some stinking internet child on the internet that I have with, with homeschooling. Anyway, thank you. Have a great night.
All right. Anybody? Thanks, Fred. Anybody else?
Looks like Rick Curtis has his hand raised.
Rick, I'm not sure if you can do it with, under the three-minute mark. You can only speak if everybody else has completed. You can only speak if everybody else is completed. Is there anybody else?
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public statement at this time?
Okay. Rick, can you keep it under three minutes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to give my two cents about ex officio members. Ex officio, basically, in the term that you're using it, it's really, it's really simple. The superintendent does not have the right to vote. They never have. The only time that the supervisor is allowed to vote is on the committees that he or she sits on, and that would be, as Steve said, I I believe it's the the tax review, border review. And the supervisor is also required by statute to sit on the Downtown Development Authority. Now, right now, we don't have enough members to still have a Downtown Development Authority and for them to do business. So I'm hoping that you'll address that pretty soon. I did send send you an email, and I didn't get a response about that when you were looking for the number of members we were supposed to have and so on. And that was quite a while ago. I'm not willing to sit as chair anymore if they were to elect me to be chair. So I would withdraw from that, but I would be willing to serve another term. Anyway, the other thing, the only other thing that I'd like to mention, I didn't ask Nick a question when we were talking about this. Nick has his own time when when he can speak. I he's not here to rebut things that I say. What I said was it needs to be looked into by somebody other than our township attorney, because our township attorney will tell you whatever you want to hear as long as you're racking up the bills, and we know that from the blue loop. I don't appreciate being chastised by one of the members of the township that I'm helping to pay for. That'll do it. Thank you. I hope I stayed under the three minutes. And by the way, Marie, thank you for doing the right thing and voting no.
Okay, is there anybody else that's?
If there is anyone else that would like to make a public statement at this time, please raise your hand or dial star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, it doesn't appear that there is.
Nope.
So our next number 14 would be our board comments. Yeah, Fred. Okay, Mr. Benzie, Trustee Benzie.
I'm all set tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
All right, trustee Rosecrans.
Thank you for all you that attended tonight. That's all I had to say.
Okay. Trustee Bliss?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I just wanted to clarify. Judy mentioned that Guy was the only candidate who came to her meet the candidates. I just want to be clear. I was also there, Judy. It was Guy and I representing the candidates. I was happy to be there. I also wanted to clarify for Fred that the township does not run the Facebook group. We don't have control over it. We don't have influence over it. So I share your concerns about it. I'd encourage you to email. I think there's three different moderators of that group and share your thoughts. And if you're looking for the attorney letter to Fred and anybody else who might be looking for it, it's in the board packet for your reference. So it's pretty clear that we've been struggling to operate our meetings here in the last few weeks. So I just want to advocate for a couple of things. We've got to have the ability to discuss these issues, discussion without making a motion, without taking action. If we don't have the ability to discuss with each other in the meeting, we end up having to have the discussion outside of the meeting, which is outside of the public eyes. So I'd really encourage us to be able to have the conversation about how we want to operate, how we want to move forward, how we want to function as a team. Nothing's going to get done unless we do function somewhat as a team in order to get four votes to move forward. I also want to encourage us, and this is for myself too, to remind us that the the township didn't reset when this new election happened. There have been things that have been in practice for years, policies and procedures. And I just really want to encourage that we don't spend a lot of time reviewing everything unless we're proposing to make changes on those policies and procedures. And if we want to change those, I think we should. I'm happy to codify what the Latin term ex officio means. I just don't know that it's the best use of our time when we have 40 slots open on our committees, so many that some committees can't meet. So I'd encourage us spending our time like that. And and I'd really encourage Karen and Marie to get in a room together and have some of these conversations. So there's some understanding of what these policies and procedures are so that we can move forward with proposals to either change them or keep moving along as we've done in the past. So I appreciate everyone turning out and all the public comment. I'm sorry that this didn't go everyone's way. If you don't like the process that was laid out here, I really encourage you to call your local legislator, your House member and your Senate member. There are obviously flaws at the state level with how the law functions and who is required to check whom on ballots and things like that. I'd really encourage you to send that message to them to clear some of this up. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bliss. All right, Treasurer Wisswasser.
Thank you. I'm going to speak a little bit to the some of the comments that we've heard tonight, and they've all been very valuable comments. But most of all, I'd like to tomorrow's going to be a very big day in America. We've all heard about the news. We've all seen it in the news. I feel that, you know, I just want to say bless our neighborhoods, our families, our communities, and everybody else that's in our townships that makes up our townships, as well as our state and local public service people, the past, the future, and the current. And most of all, bless our democracy and our able to be able to speak to these things. And God bless America. Thank you for participating tonight, everybody.
Nice job, Fred. You're right. All right, Jason.
I first want to thank everyone for allowing me the privilege of serving on the board. I appreciate both your yes votes as well as your no vote. I also want to let the community know a couple of different things. You and the community know a couple of different things. One is, I understand that my appointment is going to upset many people in our community. I do believe it was the right decision, but I'm obviously biased in that. I also want to just reassure you and our community that I am not a racist. I'm not a homophobe. I'm not a bigot. I've spent my career and my personal time working for justice and equity for those, especially those who are underserved. I've done that in our community. I've done that in other communities throughout the state. And so I those are not values that I uphold. And so I'm happy to bring a long list of people who will speak to that.
All right, thank you. My only comment is I have to agree with our treasurer 100%. Tomorrow is going to be a very interesting day, and you are so correct. And thank God for our communities, because grassroots is where it's at, always has been, always will be. You have to take it very serious, because once you start reaching other levels, they don't not that they don't take it serious, they don't have to address the issues that are on a local level. So again, thank you ever so much. Are we going to take a record roll call vote in order, or do we need a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn second.
All right, so record roll call vote?
Rosecrans?
Yes.
Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Benzie?
Yes.
Wisswasser?
Yes.
Al. Al Marigi?
Thank you.
Howe?
Yes, you two really good. All right, it looks like the meeting's adjourned, and it is about 21 minutes after eight. So you guys did a good job for a lot of stuff that needed to be discussed. So thank you.